Yes, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Luzon.
I make a motion that we move three, business, to go before number two, policy.
There's been a motion. May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Callahan. There's been a motion to move business item, business agenda item and first in front of policy. There any discussion or questions on this matter? Okay, I'll take it to a vote. Those in favor? And that's anybody opposed? No. That's unanimous. Donna, thank you very much, Mr. Luzon.
You're welcome.
We're on to business, which is the Dell Finance Agreement, I would assume, and the acquisition of financing of computers. Mr. Draper, are you going to lead us in that discussion?
Sure. As the memo, what we have are two agreements. There are typical agreements for us, Dell and Apple. Both pieces of equipment are in use across the district. We have, as you know, one-to-one technology policy. So what we've presented to you here is the typical practice of leasing the units. So we purchase them, we receive them, they're good for four years, and over the four-year life of the unit, we pay it off. The one twist to the approval that we are asking you for right now is the possibility that we could purchase them outright if the federal ESER funds can be allowed to do that. Right now, we don't see any reason why we couldn't have the federal funds do this for us, but we do not have right approval. So we're going through the process to have approval as we typically do.
Lynda, you're on mute. Sorry. Do you want to make the recommend the approval for A for us, and then we can go into questions or discussions?
Sure, for me.
Either Ned or Gina can make the, Ned, you can make the approval.
All right, let me. Sorry, just.
Okay.
I lost the, I lost the form. I just had it. I'm sorry, I can't get the form.
That's okay. That's okay. Gina, do you want to make the?
Oh, I asked the Committee for Approval for the computer leases and tech finances as submitted.
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Luzon made the motion, Mr. Callahan. Seconded any questions, any other questions or discussion on matter A?
This is, yes, it's just A, right?
Just A at this point. Any other, any questions on matter A? Just the agreement? Okay. Thank you. Those in favor of this, of approval of this agreement? Thank you. Any opposed? I don't see any oppositions, any abstentions or recusals? No? Okay, good. Thank you. On to letter B. Gina, would you like to? Make the approval? Okay. I can do it.
I just lost it when I clicked.
We're all having problems to this evening. You want me to read it for you?
Yeah.
Do you want me to read it? Okay. Ms. Picard is recommending approval of the acquisition of financing of computers through a master finance agreement and authorizing the execution delivery of my master finance agreement, equipment schedule-related documents. So that's part B. Those in favor of that agreement? Oh, sorry.
So.
Oh, I mean, wait a minute. Yeah, someone has to make a motion to approve that.
Can you finish reading it, Madam Chair?
Sure, I will finish reading it. Okay. So it's the delivery of a master finance agreement, equipment schedule, and related documents per the attached quote from Apple dated in accord with the terms of master finance agreement, Apple Quote Number 2210181031, pending review by legal counsel.
So moved.
Thank you. And there's a second by Mr. Callahan. Now we can open this up for discussions or questions for Mr. Draper or Ms. Picard. Does anyone have any questions or? Comments, discussions? No? Okay, well, then we'll take it to a vote. Those in favor of this authorization? Thank you. And those opposed? Recusals or abstentions? I don't see any. Okay, the vote was unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Draper, for the memo and the work that you've done on that. Okay, so now we're on to policy, graduation dress code policy revision. So this item was tabled at the last meeting. The revised policy was forwarded to us and for Mr. Anderson. And Gina, do you have it in front of you that you?
So this is a conversation to review John's revision of the policy per his legal advice that the committee requested at the last meeting. John?
Sure. Ladies and gentlemen, I sent to you on Sunday, or it was actually sent through the Superintendent and Donna Siskovich, revisions to the policy that you discussed last week. The revisions were intended to address the concerns that both the school committee members raised and I raised with regard to the policy that was presented to us. Included in my revisions to the policy was an explanation for those changes. I am, you have the changes. I'm happy to answer any questions that the school committee may have.
Okay, so Donna's hand, should we, I'm sorry, I'm just asking as a point of order, should we should we have a discussion first and then approve the policy or make a motion to approve it and then discuss? I'm looking for some guidance here. Ryan? Discuss.
I'd open it for discussion first.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. I appreciate it. Okay, Donna had her hand up and then Lisa.
Yeah. My only, John, you did an excellent job on this. I think it's clean, neat, to the point. And I do think it covers most of the bases, but I would like to add somewhere I had the wording. Wait a minute, hold on. Oh, I lost it. But I would like to add. I just had it a second ago. Something, oh, here it is. Okay. Under C, or what would be C? You took out C. But what would be C and what it looks like is the district encourages the wearing of honors cords, stalls. I'd like to add sashes. I don't know if that's covered under stalls, but sashes, like a boy scout eagle scout sash, meritorious artifacts or pins. Because I think if we added something to the effect of artifacts, it would cover anything that was merited by the student, by the person. Okay, it was an honor artifact. So that's my, that's my point to cover all the bases.
That's, that's fine. I'm pleased with the suggestion that you've made to improve the draft. It does not single out any group positively or negatively. So we're not in the business of, you know, one group is better than another group. It is neutral. I mean, one of the guiding principles of this was that the policy is neutral. The school department is not going to be, the school district is not going to be in the interest of the business of saying, you know, we like your, you know, we like this and we don't like that. It is a neutral, it is deliberately written as a neutral policy. The only time that the schools district would step in if attire is materially disruptive to the graduation ceremony. And I will be happy to provide training to the administrators as to what material disruptive means. Materially disruptive is the standard that we use in our dress code right now. It is the standard that the Supreme Court established in the Tinker case in the 1960s. And numerous courts since then have given examples of what they believe are materially disruptive and what are not. It's not a situation where one symbol is materially disruptive or another. It is more, what does it do to the environment of the crowd? So for example, if someone came to graduation without anything under their gown, as happened in another high school, that would probably be disruptive to the grad, materially disruptive to the graduation. And that is something that the administration, because it's against, public nudity is against the law in Rhode Island, and that is something that the administration could and would be expected to deal with. By contrast, we're not going to have the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the principal standing at the gate and saying, we like your artifact, we don't like your artifact. The language that you've suggested, Donna, is very helpful and I appreciate it.
Thank you, John. I also think that the intention is to make it so that whatever they wear on their gown or whatever has been earned. And I think that kind of limits it to just anything. Draping a Confederate flag over their shoulders is not something that would be appropriate. So, and it would be material, materially disruptive. Anyway. All right, thanks. All right. So does anybody want me to read that back?
Dead Amendment?
We haven't, we don't have a motion yet, so I would simply.
Not a motion yet.
When the motion is, when the motion is made, that if you would make the motion with regard to the policy as distributed with the word sashes, meritorious artifacts inserted after the word stalls.
Okay.
Chair.
Well, Lisa has her hand up. Mr. Luzon first. I'm sorry. And then Mr. Day. Lisa, Macaruso, you have the floor.
So, John, I also want to thank you for taking the time on your weekend to expedite this rewrite. Clearly, to me, that signals that you're invested in, right, in the inclusivity and the, that the intention that we have here. And I truly do thank you for taking time this weekend to do this so that we could meet. The whole school committee has reconvened an additional meeting just to address this as well. Again, I think that points towards everyone's intentions being to be inclusive and to do the right thing by our students. Donna is on to something. Okay, we have many members of the Anti-Racism Task Force here, but also we have members in the audience that would like to speak this evening from the tribal council. So all that John has presented, I accept. All of the wording and revisions, I accept and endorse. It has moved our dress code, our graduation dress code forward in terms of gender inclusivity, neutrality. It works in many, many, many ways. What I am asking, and this was in consultation with, with the task force as well as input from the tribe, is rather, we can add sashes and pins, but without adding the three words, traditional tribal regalia. The fact of the matter is, for our particular community, we are not protecting the students or accepting the lived experiences that they have testified to now two meetings in a row in public and are prepared to testify again for this evening.
I will.
If I could just finish, Chair, if I could just finish. And I understand that it may not be, it may open up a hypothetical potential issue in future years. I'd ask us to just stand up and, and consider that. The spotlight is on this right now. I'm fairly confident that our indigenous students are going to cross the stage wearing what they, what they have earned, wearing their traditional tribal regalia without issue. I truly believe that's going to happen under this policy. But what about their children? What about when we are gone? What about when this issue has left Twitter and left our site? Did we leave a policy behind that is inclusive in practice? And that's my concern, and that's what I ask us to continue to consider, and you'll hear that this evening as well. To Donna's point, yep, it needs a little bit more. I ask that we really, truly deeply consider the point of view of the traditional tribal regalia. My last thought on the matter is what makes it different than any other group that we'd be singling out is that there is a federal law that calls out and protects this group and the right to wear eagle feathers during ceremonies that no other group is allowed to wear. And there is model legislation in other states for this as well. So there is, there is that. And so with that, I'll yield the rest of my time to the council and also to the members of the audience that wish to speak tonight. And again, thank you all for coming back tonight. It means something.
I'd like to respond.
Yeah, Mr. Day, John, may I have John Anderson respond first before I call him?
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate the intent, but I'm not going to recommend that this language be added because this language is singling out a separate group. And I want to make it very clear to the committee that if tomorrow morning, if you incorporate this language and single out a separate group, and another group comes into the superintendent's office tomorrow morning, I will ask the superintendent to call another emergency school committee meeting to add their language. And there are statutes that protect other groups in the country. We have laws, for example, against with regard to hate crimes, with regard to defacing synagogues and so forth. The list would go on and on, and the school committee then would be in the business of looking at every one of these groups. And the school committee would not be in a position to refuse any group when that group came forward and asked to have a policy added. I can see tomorrow morning, a group saying, we would like the word religious added to this list because we want to expect, respect people's freedom of religion. I would advise the school committee that if we're singling out one group, then you will need to single out another group, and you will need to then have meeting after meeting to discuss this issue. The policy as written is a neutral policy. The language that Donna asked to be added is neutral language. I mean no disrespect to the tribe, to any particular group. I am simply advising the school committee that you are, will be stepping on a slippery slope with regard to the fact that the state of Arizona adopted about two weeks ago a language that Ms. Macaruso is referring to. Again, that language has to be viewed in the entire context of the laws of Arizona. And indeed, when somebody says, well, great, I can wear my tribal, you know, my tribal symbol, but I can't wear my religious symbol. I would not want to be in a position of defending that in the state of Arizona. It has, the law is only, you know, a few weeks old in Arizona, and I'm not going to sit here and tell you that that will be upheld. I want you to have a policy that is, will be upheld and will not put future school committees in, and when I mean future school committees, I mean perhaps as soon as two days from now in the position of having to add group after group after group to section B of this dress code.
Mr. Day?
Yes. John Anderson has been a solicitor for ten-plus years. I don't have any recollection. I've been here as long as, longer than John. I have no recollection of him ever giving us legal advice that he couldn't defend in a court of law. There've been many, many instances where he is going toe-to-toe with individuals that wanted to put this school district in a, in a negative light, and he had been able to to champion on the side of the Cherahoe School District. I believe that we need to stop being politically correct in some ways that we're trying to be and, and listen to our solicitor and, and take his advice and, and move forward with this. You know, we're concerned about what may happen. I'm more, I'm concerned about what may happen, as Donna Chambers said earlier, about someone coming up here and deciding they want to wear something real offensive. I think we have a good staff here at Cherahoe. I think that they're capable of sitting down and meeting with the entire group and making them well aware of anything that they do at graduation could potentially impact their future and getting a good job, going into a good college, moving forward. I mean, you know, this YouTube's out there and stuff, anything that is being done today in a negative light. These students need to have a clear understanding that this stuff comes back to bite you and it's, and it's hurt a number of people and things that they've tried to do. One of the ones that, that I know, because my wife watches the show a lot, is a young man who was a finalist in one of these talent shows that a picture showed up of him sitting next to an individual that appeared to have a Ku Klux Huda on, and the guy was booted off the, off the show or resigned from the show. So these things are out there. So I think we have a staff that can can keep these students on the, on the right track, and I, I don't think that anybody is going to make a big deal, staff-wise, make a big deal about someone who wants to wear what is a legitimate tribal symbol and stuff like that. But I, I'm thinking that we're, we're going to be here for the next couple of hours. I'm certainly not going to be here the next couple of hours. I got another, another appointment here around seven o'clock. So if we want to turn around and just continue to pick apart what John Anderson has taught us what to do, then unfortunately, you people have to do it without me. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Just one second, Mr. Luzon. Did you have your hand raised?
No, just a quick point. George is in with the attendees right now.
Oh, he is? Okay.
I just promoted him to panelist.
Thank you. Thank you.
Interrupting.
That's okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Stahl is next, and I, I see the hands raised. We have two attendees that would like to speak, like to have the school committee speak first. So, Mr. Stahl, you have the floor, and then we'll move from there.
Thank you. I agree with the sentiments of Mr. Day. I, I think we need to take John's advice on this. I did listen to the last discussion that I missed. I did watch the task force meeting on the subject, so I understand what we're talking about. I think the idea that once you go to one group, that you've got to go to every group, enlist every group, is a really valid point by John. And if you don't, you're really causing problems. So I don't want to name groups. I have no issue whatsoever with the folks from the Narragansett Tribe or any other tribe wearing their, their customary added feathers and beaded stalls and things like that. I, I think that's just fine. I, I also think it's really interesting. It was, it was, I don't know, I guess it was ironic and also nice for me to hear the Anti-Racism Task Force talk about this in the context of religious freedoms, that these are in fact spiritual or religious practices. I've been asking for our task force to consider that since it started and frankly have been ignored in that. So I think it was really important that that was part of the conversation, that this is something, the examples were used of a yarmulke or a cross necklace or other things that might be worn that we wouldn't remove, and I think these fall in the same category. So I do think that they should be protected, and that's fine, but we're not mentioning any of those particular groups. And I think John's taking the right approach for us in that, in just having a broad policy that says, listen, we trust our administrators. We say we trust our kids. I'm not sure that you can trust all the graduating kids to always make great decisions, but I do think we can trust our administrators to make good decisions and to know things that are of religious significance and to leave them alone or let them pass, so to speak, in our graduation ceremonies. So I have no issue for that whatsoever. I, I would like for the task force to continue on this train of thought of religious freedom being something that we look at in terms of the inequity and the injustice. I've been saying it, and it hasn't been heard. Now it's in the conversation. I hope it stays there in the conversation, again, for all groups, not for one group. The other thing I'd say overall is that, what I didn't hear anyone talk about in the discussion of the task force or last meeting was the idea that the culture that's being represented is really Cherahoe culture, is really school culture. This is a place where we all adopt a culture together that sort of is a neutral space where we can agree on culture. So I think having a tradition and having things set where everyone's wearing the same thing and doing the same thing without a lot of deviation is actually a really good thing. And that helps us be in the mindset of working together as a community, graduating together as a community. It isn't so much about every individual being able to express their particular thing. And I think there's other places where that can happen, but I think graduation is about Cherahoe culture, and it's not a bad thing to kind of keep it that way. And the last thing I wanted to say is that when you keep adding groups or you take away restrictions because you're afraid of having anything, I heard that, Gary, with the URI graduation, but that's, I think, very different because you've got adults who have chosen to be at that school, which is very different than youth coming through a public school system. I think when you take everything away because you're afraid to have any parameters, then you have chaos. And I don't think for a public K through 12 school system that that's a great idea. So I'm in favor of the policy the way that John put it forward tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stahl. Mr. Day, do you have another comment? Because your hand's still raised. I want to make sure you, you're good. Okay, good. Do we have any other school committee members that have any other comments?
I don't know. Take my hand down. I'll try that.
That's okay. You go ahead. I just wanted to make sure I didn't, if not, I can go to, there's two attendees that have their hand up. Mr. Stahl?
Just a really quick add-on. One of the things I didn't love in the policy that I know everyone else did, so I won't spend a lot of time on it, is the choose your color, green or white, is kind of a gender-neutral position. I think if we're really going for uniformity, which I've expressed I'm a fan of in the case of graduation, I think we should have all green robes or all white robes or all some other color robe. And let's take that confusion out of it, and let's take that issue out of it. That's the last adjustment that I'd like to see made.
Thank you, Mr. Stahl. Okay, so I'm going to move to the panelists. Mr. Spears, I'm going to bring you in and allow you to talk. Thank you for waiting. You, if you unmute yourself, you have the floor. Can you unmute yourself, sir? I don't think I can.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Oh, great. Well, thank you, everyone. Yeah, again, my name's Cassius Spears. I am, I am a fourth generation, actually, Cherahoe student on actually both sides of my family. So I have a long legacy within the school district, and, and I'm a Hopkien resident, and I'm the first councilman of the Narragansett Indian Tribe. I just wanted to thank the Anti-Racism Task Force for definitely bringing this concern to the school committee and, you know, and talking about ceremonial objects and how they're important to the Narragansett students that are graduating. I, I listened to the legal, I kind of listened to the last meeting, and I listened to the legal language that was presented in the policy. And I'm, I'm not going to say I'm explicitly against it. I do see that the language, you know, provided, will allow the practice, which I'm for. But I do fear that the absence doesn't actually ensure that the practice is protected by the policy and it may not always be understood by leadership. You know, this may be fine in the near future, and I don't, I don't anticipate there being an issue. But I do think that it could become problematic over time. And I, and this is proven by the fact that this is pretty much the standing policy that, that is going on right now. I mean, I know when I graduated from Cherahoe, I, I wore, I was, I wore eagle feather and I wore my, my regalia. And I did not have an issue. However, I was unclear of the policy when I did that, and I kind of went in with a sense of fear as without, if I was going to be stopped or not. And I, you know, I don't know if any graduating student should have fear of not knowing. I don't, I don't think that should be a case on a day that is meant to be celebratory, you know? So, yeah, so there's, there's some hesitation there. Now. So, yeah, so there's there's some hesitation there. Now, the main thing that I am happy with is that it will allow the practice to continue. But again, my fear, the fear of uncertainty is kind of in my sticking point. I would, my recommendation would be this, and I I give this to the committee for consideration. But my recommendation recommendation would be actually to include in the policy that the Narragansett Indian Tribe. Is an honoring society for the purposes of graduation. That would mean that the tribe. The tribe's program, which we have in honoring our youth program at our tribe, would be able to issue and permit. Meritorious objects to graduating tribal membership. This, in a sense, would act in and function the same way as your honoring societies do. I would recommend that and that is not necessarily picking one over another. That's that's allowing our society. Our our cultural practices to be determined by us and presented to us. Sentenced to us by and sanctioned by us to our tribal membership at graduation day. And I, so I would offer that as a way to solve the concern of about. And I will mention this, I I do have a problem with the one size fiddle all approach. When we talk about tribes and tribal membership and I and I say this because tribes. Have a special relationship with the state and a special relationship with the federal government. It's not necessarily a civil rights issue when we're talking about this. It's not a religious freedom issue. It's us, we have a special relations that was granted or or maintained. Since the founding of this this country, I, you know, for, you know, so this, this is that relationship. I I believe this is a way to clearly, you know, express that relationship and show that relationship and and defer. Because I do agree, you know, it isn't up to, you know, the superintendent or the principal to determine what is ceremonial. And what is not. That is the responsibility. That is, that is the responsibility of the tribe. So if you would, I I believe if you would consider that recommendation, I feel that that would. Resolve some of the concerns and also better and enhance the relationships with the Narragansett Tribe and its community. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Donna Chambers and then I'll allow Ms. Harris to come in. Good, Donna.
Yeah, I I appreciate what Mr. Spears just said. I hope that the wording and the considerations that we have been doing at this, that we're involved in at this meeting would. Help improve the relationships with the tribes. I think that's one of our goals is to certainly. Have a good relationship with all of our students, including those who are members of the tribe. One of the things that I heard was. That made me think about something, for example, a National Honor Society or Boy Scout Eagle. Award is usually presented at an induction ceremony or some occasion, some ceremony. Outside of the graduation. We're just talking about wearing the thing or or. Displaying the 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 manifestation of that that award. As part of their graduation attire. It's not the opportunity to highlight an award. It's just. It's giving the kids, the students, the opportunity to display that award that was earned by them, whatever that is. And I would assume that the tribe has an occasion to. Highlight the award for the student beside, outside of the graduation or before the graduation. So when they wear their feathers or whatever other thing at the graduation, that's really just displaying what they have earned. No matter what it is. Anyway, that's my point. All right. I don't think the graduation ceremony is intended to be. The first time that person wears the award, is receiving the award. Anyway. Maybe I'm misunderstanding what you said, but that's what I feel. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Chambers. Okay, no other committee member. I will go to the next attendee, Carla LaRoche. Harris, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So, I mean, I understand what legal is saying that the policy has to be vague. But your original policy was vague to begin with, so it really all, it boils down to practice. So if we cannot have it in the policy, we definitely need some type of yearly quick. Even if it's a quick training before graduation. So that way it ensures that when we are no longer here and it's a different superintendent. Because Gina has chosen to retire one day or different school committee or whatever it may be, that we don't have this issue again because this is an issue that. Has been going on a long time of children not being their traditional clothing or having things removed, physically removed from them. So we need something to ensure that it doesn't happen again because your original policy is vague. And while this one is, I guess, better, and I want to thank you for taking the time to do it. It doesn't, it doesn't explicitly say that you can do these things. So we need. School staff to understand that you are not to touch these children on the day. If it's not, doesn't fall under the list that John gives you as you know disruptive. Leave them alone. We do need to have that in place because it wasn't necessarily your policy. It was the practice that has caused us to be here. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Harris. And the other committee member, Silver Moon LaRose. On the floor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to raise a couple of concerns that I have with this, the way it's written. One, it requires a cap and gown. It doesn't state that a student can choose to wear traditional regalia in lieu of that gown. I know in the past, there have been Narragansett students who have worn full regalia and have not worn a full gown over top of that. One of the reasons being if your regalia has eagle feathers, you're not supposed to cover them. So also some, some male attire has feathered bustles that a gown can't go over. If they are wearing a traditional roach on their head, a cap can't go over top of that. So that's a concern that we're requiring that. And and because we're leaving out specific language about the ability to wear traditional Native American regalia. That's where those kind of blanket rules don't really fit. There's also no language around modifications to cap and gown. It says you can wear honor cords, stalls, pins. Things that are earned, but it doesn't say like that you can modify the cap and gown itself so that you can beat it. Or it can be painted on with a traditional design. There's nothing in the language about modifications. And from practice, from past practice, we know as a community, if it's not in the policy, it's up for interpretation. And that's what happened when my son graduated just a couple of years ago. There was nothing in the language saying we could not modify a cap and gown, so I beat it as cap. And it wasn't until the day before graduation when practice was coming, that an email went out saying you cannot modify the cap or gown or anything. So of course I took that up with the principal. He was allowed to walk and wear his beaded cap. But I had to go through the actions of actually having that conversation and requesting that permission. And it became a concern because if we had just shown up on the day and that had come out beforehand, it was like a change in the rules. The day before. So not having things in the policy doesn't guarantee that they'll be protected. And I think the fear around you, you know, having a meeting for everybody who brings, you know, concerns. You should have a meeting for everyone who brings concerns because the policy should be all encompassing of other people's traditions. And other people's. You know, what's sacred to them and what's ceremonial to them and what's religious to them. And this conversation should be had with others if we are trying to build an inclusive community. So I don't say shy away from doing something because you don't want to be bothered. I think it's important to, you know, to make, have these conversations because there may be things that we don't understand about other people's practices. That are important to start acknowledging.
Thank you. Maya Hill. You have the floor.
Hello, um, thank you again for allowing us to come to this meeting tonight, which obviously is. Is of great importance. A couple of things, as I scratched my notes right here is. The anti racism task force, just as Silver Moon just mentioned, was brought about so that we could be the voice. For each and every group who has a concern. So I too don't believe we should be shying away from or thinking that we're opening up Pandora's box. When it comes to all of the different groups who have a concern. I do not. I do not. Have a specific concern as the policy is written to be taken out. But what it lacks, as previous members have already discussed, what it lacks is what is. What we desperately need to have put in place because every single generation that comes through those doors and that walked. That is going to walk on that stage is going to have the same exact concern. And once and for all, I believe that someone needs to stand up and put this down on paper. So that we do not have to have this conversation each and every time one of our students graduates. If our students receive. And on, within an honoring ceremony that the tribes put on. Something that you, that the school committee considers to be appropriate. We are then again faced with the decision of others to say what we can and what we can't. Wear and what we already have in place. We have generations of what's in place for us. And the gender neutrality was passed without a blink. This is now by my count, the fourth conversation, the fourth meeting that has to be brought. Just to have the language embedded into our dress policy for the future generations. And I think that really needs to be understood. And that how important it is to us, which is why we keep coming back to the table. We're not asking. To put a banner on because we graduated. This is, it it's further than that. And we've tried to express this in as many ways possible. And we still are being told that, well, if we just make it neutral, then it's safe for everybody else. That's, that's not the case because as Silver Moon mentioned, Gina's going to retire someday, probably soon after all of this. And there's going to be somebody else that's going to have to face this because I can guarantee you. That the generations that come after us are are going to continue this concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Maya. Mr. Stahl, have his hand raised and then Lisa and then Catherine. Mr. Stahl, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Couple of points. One, I think it's important to remember historically. School districts, public school districts in America have had all kinds of celebrations outside of the graduation celebration for different subgroups. For different subcultures, for religious groups, for scout groups, for clubs, for other groups. There have been things like baccalaureate services. Or in Christian or Catholic churches and things like that. This is not the only opportunity that a graduate has to celebrate. This is the common place. This is the neutral space. This is the everybody thing. Nobody gets to have this graduation be exactly what they want personally for them. Because that wouldn't work for everybody else there. So my daughter is graduating. This graduation service ceremony that we have at Cherahoe will not be what my high school senior necessarily views as her ideal graduation. It won't be her only celebration. It's fine. What it will be is the time when she's there with every other senior that's graduating from Cherahoe. In that neutral public school space, having the one corporate ceremony with everyone there. I think we need to keep in mind that we're not, you know, we're not trying to take away from anyone's freedom or opportunities to celebrate entirely how they want to. And when they want to. And I think that we should encourage our subcultures, subgroups, religious groups, et cetera. To do other graduation celebrations with their graduates. I think that that's extremely important. I just want us to keep in mind that what we're talking about is the one large collective gathering where we try to stay. As neutral as possible, so that as many people as possible can feel comfortable going through our education system. And feel comfortable with the graduation ceremony that happens. We're trying to be as respectful and neutral as possible. I think that's incredibly important. Also, when we say we're not going to go down a slippery slope and it's not going to get crazy with us nitpicking everything. You know, the conversation, this was the, the, in the anti racism task force meeting. The conversation came that we needed to take sneakers or athletic footwear out of the the old policy. I don't care if sneakers or athletic footwear is in the old policy or not, but the discussion was that it was a matter of inclusivity. Or being exclusive or not being inclusive or being hateful to not allow sneakers or athletic footwear. And I, you know, someone like me, I see that and I hear that discussion. I think that's crazy. It's, it's a matter of preference. It's a matter of whatever the school district decides is important. There are different types of shoes that can be purchased for different amounts. It's not, it's not an equality issue. And so it doesn't give a lot of confidence that there wouldn't be a slippery slope. And the last thing I want to say is we are talking about a Cherahoe graduation. Where it is as neutral as possible and there's a uniform to to paint the picture of a Cherahoe graduation. Any other organization you go into where there's a situation like that, it's going to have the same things. We prepare our graduates well. There should be a uniform that everyone wears, some minor alterations to that uniform. Or incorporating things that are of religious significance that are added to that uniform. As I said earlier, I have no problem with and I think our administrators can handle just fine. I still like the policy as John brought it to us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stahl. Ms. MacRusso, you have the floor and then Catherine, Dusty.
Catherine's hand was up before mine.
Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry. I put you in the queue. That's okay, Catherine, you can go ahead. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. That's fine. So I guess I'm a little bit more of an anarchist and I, my recommendation was to have. Basically no policy because I think it shows our students that we trust them. And frankly, I don't care what anybody wears under a cap and gown because I think it's, it's trusting them to make a good decision. I think it's a celebration and I think students should be free to celebrate the way that they want to celebrate there. Unfortunately, we know that it has happened in the past that indigenous students have been told you cannot wear this. Because it doesn't fit our worldview. That's a problem. And I think we all as a committee have recognized that that's a problem. So this might be a stupid question and and I'm not above asking stupid questions, of course, but John, if we add the word religious into the policy. Religious artifacts. What are, are we worried that we're blurring the line between separation of church and state? Are we worried that anybody's going to make up a religion? Which, I'll be honest with you, you know, again, watch the world burn. I think we trust our students to to celebrate in an appropriate way. So what is the concern about adding the word religious regalia?
I I don't have an objection to adding the word religious because it doesn't single out a particular group.
Okay, so then I would leave it to. Members of the anti racism task force to to ask them if they feel that that would offer them adequate protection. Thank you.
Ms. Ms. MacRusso, you have the floor. Thank you, Catherine.
Lisa's fine. Mrs. MacRusso.
Thank you.
So, Catherine, thank you for that. I, my understanding is that Donna's suggestion around meritorious, that's a hard word to say. You know what I mean? The objects with merit earned, meritorious, there it is, objects. Is, is something that I can vote for and that is in line. Close, more closely in line with what the intention for the policy is. So I wanted to insert that now to move this forward. I know we have three more members. Two members of the task force and the principal who's waiting to speak as well. And so in terms of structuring this conversation. I want to give a moment to. to Donna so that if she wanted to, in fact, insert that as an amendment, which John has supported and then help to hone this conversation in with a little bit more direction. I wanted to let you know that this may be a good time to do that. It is something that I can support.
I would just point out there is no motion on the floor to women. So somebody has to make a motion.
Right. So to make a motion with the amendment. And since Donna introduced it, I feel it's courteous to give that back to Donna. Um, my question, John, um, is again, thinking about the 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 policy I had the opportunity to review. Is there room in our print? So I'm I'm help me with this outside policy, but in our print, in our documentation for an asterisk as Cassius spoke to that that print that says, oh, and by the way, Cherahoe federally recognized tribes right are an entity by which they can offer meritorious objects. Is there a place for that somewhere in our documentation?
And I guess my response, Lisa, is that other groups would like who are recognized by the federal government in different ways. I'm sure would like the same endorsement by the Cherahoe School Committee. And I am, whereas I am very comfortable with the suggestion made by Catherine because we're not picking and choosing whose religion we like and whose religion we don't don't like. And I do recognize the First Amendment with regard to religion is a very difficult area because you have both the free exercise clause and the Establishment Clause, but I think that it respects the Free Exercise Clause that the language that was added by Donna and the piece that was added by Catherine should address the concerns that have been raised today by the tribe that would apply equally to other religious groups. So for example, if a student came to graduation wearing a Star of David and somebody said, oh, I'm offended by that. I don't like what's happening in the Middle East and I believe that that's the fault of one particular country. It would not be appropriate for the administration to say, well, you have to take off your religious symbol. So I'm very comfortable. I think Catherine, just like Donna made a good suggestion. I would hope when this motion is made that it would include Catherine's suggestion. And I think Catherine's suggestion does cover all of the concerns that were raised here tonight.
Thank you for that. So so then my my response, Chair, is that with the addition of Catherine's language and Donna's language, because I want to be want to stress to the committee the issue around merit and objects is important. On those two additions, I can certainly support a motion to approve with that amendment. And I will then ask the Anti-Racism Task Force to circle back around practice and start to go into a think tank and see what we can do to support the administration and future administrations in terms of making sure the practice is what it needs to be. So so thank you for that. And and Donna, I hope that you'll take that up.
Thank you, Lisa. Ms. Chambers, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I was going to make a motion. Okay. Um, and that would be to adopt the language that John crafted for us so carefully. And but adding in under C, the new C, adding in after honors cords, stoles, sashes, meritorious and religious artifacts or pins. Okay. Um, I just would like to make the motion that to add that.
Okay, so do we want to add the word religious in there? And how is that Catherine's raising her hand?
I I I heard.
She said religious.
I understand exactly what Donna said.
I added it in when Catherine mentioned it.
Because I I I I'm writing it down as you're saying and I missed the word.
Let me go over it again. Let me go over it again.
Okay, thank you.
After stoles.
Right.
Right. I added sashes, meritorious and religious artifacts.
Thank you.
Or pins.
There's been a motion by Donna and second by Mr. Luzon. I'm hoping this 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 new motion up for conversation and or discussion.
Has it been seconded?
Yes, Mr. Luzon seconded.
Okay, good. All right.
While we go back into discussion. Let's see. Oh. Craig McKenzie, please, you have the floor.
Thank you. So I I feel very good about the reflection that's happened in this meeting so far. I just want to invoke Mr. Ritchie, who in and it's beyond me that this didn't turn into policy in some way because he was so policy driven when we were making decisions about saying that everyone was going to wear their caps and gowns and that was going to be enough. And I just want everybody to reflect on the fact that the reason behind that decision was so that the senior class, and if you've ever been to one of our our graduation ceremonies, particularly at the Ryan Center, the synchronicity of what the students and faculty even and us as administrators did as a class was unifying. His mission and his goal was that as a class, they all did one thing equally together in the moment, one last time. And having said that, like I said, I feel great about the discussion and the positive changes that are going to take place in the graduation ceremony going forward. But when Mr. Stahl, no offense, Mr. Stahl, but when you use the words corporate and neutral, that offends me personally because it's a very meaningful, unifying experience that we have at least during my tenure as a principal. My thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. Any other school committee members have any other comments with regards to the new amended policy? Because I have two members from the two attendees. I think Thon Harris, you had your hand up first. You have the floor. Mr. Harris.
Ashley Klassen, everyone. Hello. I just want to say, one, again, I want to thank you for having this conversation. Because I must say, in in my years, I didn't know as though I would be privy to sitting here and listening to these conversations. And that is absolutely uplifting. I would like to thank everyone who spoke and has worked on this because these are not the most easy conversations. And I I just wanted to, I I really like the way the conversation is going with the kind of some sort of protections put in there. As you heard, other people spoke as well, looking for some sort of protection and and thank you for these ideas. And I I just want to just reiterate, I think, and Donna said last week about just when we look at the history of how schools were used for tribal people and with like the remains of the 215 schoolchildren just being found and and that these are the relationship of school was to assimilate and eradicate the indigenous people. And or. And therefore, this community embracing us and celebrating us in a in a much different way is truly all we are kind of asking for. Obviously, we know this this school as a whole is is a much different place now. Yet there is still unease within our community and that the fact that you're building this bridge is just it uplifts me again. So thank you so much for that. And I just wanted to just because someone had said, and I believe it was from a comment I made. I just want to, I again, I understand unification and I think as a proud Cherahoe graduate, class of 1997, I I understand and feel unity and togetherness with everyone in my class. I I mean, we're in a small community. We see the people that we go to school with all the time. Some of us move away and make it big. Some of us stay here, make it big. But we live, try to live very happy lives. But I do just want to say that the actual graduation ceremony, and I know there are many ceremonies because we do many different ceremonies in all other religions, but that is a European ceremony. So I did want to make that point because it's not this neutral thing that was made up for all communities. It is a European celebration or or ceremony that is has become the norm because that is the norm. Who makes the norms? And so again, I I just want to thank you all so very much for your hard work. It's beautiful out and here we are sitting on Zoom for these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, for your comments. Donna, you have your hand raised?
I do. Just let me comment. Craig, thank you for reminding us of Barry at this wonderful time of year. And I did attend many graduations and I agree with you. He liked the uniformity, but I also think he would I think he would be okay with the policy as written because he also honored the individuality of the students along with the uniformity as well as the recognition and giving the students an opportunity to be recognized for their symbols or awards. So thank you for reminding us of that. But I do think he'd be okay with this.
Thanks, Donna. We have one other person, Adonis Spears. Do you have the floor? I have to unmute you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to add some clarification to Donna's comments earlier after Cassius spoke. There was a question about where the actual bestowing of meritorious artifacts would happen. And that that the tribe has an honoring ceremony that has predates Cherahoe, you know, by by many years. And so that already is in existence. And so that would be the place where that would happen. And then the students would display that at the actual graduation ceremony. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then the other, just to kind of take this moment to educate the the school committee because clearly there's a lot of misunderstanding or lack of education around terminology about regalia, about native people, about saying the word Narragansett instead of Native American, which we're talking about the Narragansett community. So we can be specific about that. That eagle feathers in particular are bestowed upon people who go into war or into battle because it is a life or death situation. And the placing of an eagle feather on a mortar board for our native students who were forcibly removed from their homes and communities and forced into assimilation and uniformity. And so that has some great value that had their languages, cultures and religions beaten out of them. And as Thon mentioned, I urge you to Google Kamloops Residential School. Where 215 indigenous children's bodies were unearthed last week. And that is the tip of the iceberg. We're talking about residential schools across Canada and boarding schools across the United States where there are hundreds of unmarked native graves. So when we pin an eagle feather to our children's mortar board to walk across that stage, they have survived something, a system that has literally been life or death on this continent.
Thank you, Ms. Spears. I have a Mish, I hope I say this right, Mishke Thompson. You have the floor.
Yes, hello. My name is Mishke Thompson. Um, I am a member of the Narragansett Tribe. I have lived here my entire life. I graduated at Cherahoe in 93. And I just wanted to say, you know, I hear everything that everyone's saying, but I just want people to think about this. Imagine being a Native American student in this school and being able to share your culture as you graduate with the rest of your classmates, but you're sharing who you are as a person and who you have been all this time, trying to just carve a little bit of space to to show that you're proud of who you are. For so long, we've had to not almost not be proud. So how beautiful would it look to see the graduation and see those in the regalia? See them with their feathers and and their heads are held high because they've gone through the system that didn't want them. And they've made it and they're proud. And how beautiful it would look to see them, you know, you even as, you know, school committee members and and teachers and all of you to look out in that in that crowd of all those students and see the individual Native American students that you helped make it. You know, and and just imagine being that student. You matter. I know when I graduated, I didn't feel like I mattered. And so the fact that you are having this meeting, um, you know, I hear everyone, those who aren't for this. But can we just say, um, you know, just take a moment and think as one of those students that are Native American, to be able to wear your your feathers or your beaded regalia or your, you know, beaded cap, whatever it may be. But, um, that's a proud moment for them and for many of their parents. Some of their parents haven't even been able to graduate. So it's just um, an opportunity to share our culture, to be seen, be heard. Um, I don't think there's anything wrong with that. And so by putting that into, you know, just setting that aside to give us that opportunity so we parents do not have to have this argument. We don't have to always, you know, we don't have to call the school and have a meeting and and do all of those things. I just really think, um, you know, if you take a moment and just think about that, you'll understand better why we're so wanting to push for this. Just to be included is all we want and to be seen and be proud of who we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Do I have any other? We have a motion and Mr. Card, were you going to say anything?
Um, I'll just say a couple of things. One is I do hear the concern on the practices. We have a conversation at the Anti-Racism Task Force on Wednesday as well. But I think myself, Craig, Andrea can definitely sort of work with our faculty and staff. Because I agree, there's ongoing work, not just about the Narragansett Tribe students, but about many of our students. And I think our adults are ready for that work. They they're they're they don't want to do anything that would infringe upon anyone's culture or belief. And I think we can provide messaging that will hopefully codify our practices so that people feel very comfortable that the admin, the teachers and the faculty and staff that are a part of our graduation and our ceremonies understand the importance, the new policy and the expectations.
Thank you very much for those comments. That was helpful. Thank you. We have a motion in a second to accept this dress code for graduation ceremony policy as amended by Donna's changes in the policy. I'm going to call this to a vote. We've heard from everyone. I I believe the policy is inclusive. And I think that moving forward, given the the idea of the meritorious artifacts and pins and the religious piece of it, I think that that would hopefully make all of our students feel like this is an inclusive policy and that they can express themselves at graduation as they so as they so choose. So I'm going to call this to a vote. Those in favor of the policy as amended?
Linda, can I just say it's not amended?
I'm sorry, it isn't amended.
It's not amended, no. She added to John's, but you didn't have an original. So it's just the motion with to include the the policy John wrote with the language Donna added.
Okay, so it's the policy. Thank you, Donna, for that. That is the policy that John wrote with the language that both Catherine and Donna added. So those in favor? Any opposed? Any recusal or abstentions? Well, the policy has passed as as presented. Thank you very much. That was all that was up. I'm sorry. I just noticed that. The policy has been passed. There is Heather Angel. You have your hand up. Do you want to at least?
Excuse me, Linda, can I just? Excuse me, Linda, can I just ask, is Bill Day still here?
No, he left.
He left, thank you.
Yes, so it's not including Bill Day. Um, I'm sorry, I, there's a person with their hand up, Heather Angel. Do you have a comment to make?
Hi, I'm, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that for the, those who spoke ahead of me. Um, they're so eloquent. Their words touched my heart. I'm an alum of Cherahoe High School. And when I had children and they became the age to go to Cherahoe High School. I moved out of the state because of my experiences and how hurtful they were and how how hurtful they were. Forgive me. And I'm touched, deeply touched by this group, this board, those on the phone call who see the need for and persevered for this conversation. Thank you for having this conversation. It is much needed, long overdue. And I appreciate all that you're doing to have it and see that there is a real need for a population such as Native Americans across the country who suffer some of the lowest graduation rates. And one of the things I just wanted to share is that the importance of a Native American student being able to either wear their eagle feather or their regalia, any item of their regalia. Why it's so important during graduation. Oftentimes we are told that we just want to remember the past. But please know that it is our very present. The reason why many students need to represent their culture is to show others as well as themselves that they are here. That they have survived, that they are bloomed from the beautiful seeds of their ancestors before them. Who, as you've heard already, many did not survive, forced into assimilation. Having the language stolen from them. Even their culture in the very state of Rhode Island. As you know, in the main newspaper at the time. There was money being offered for the scalps of our Narragansett ancestors. So for our children to still stand and still walk in hallways that have not always been welcoming. This is huge. And I pray that these types of conversations continue. Our children stand tall and be proud to receive their education. For many, it was robbed from them. And I thank those who have gone before me to speak. Just hearing this conversation out loud is very powerful and overwhelming in a very good way and necessary way. We cannot change what we do not acknowledge. So thank you for the time.
Thank you very much for that, those heartfelt and very important comments. Thank you. Um, yes, Mr. Luzon.
Um, Madam Chair, seeing there's nothing else on the agenda, uh, agenda, I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second on that. Thank you, Mr. Callahan. There's been a um, a motion to adjourn the meeting, seconded by um, Mr. Callahan. Those in favor of adjournment? It looks like that's unanimous. Thank you very much. And thank you again for uh, the special meeting and for all of your time. And it was a great conversation. Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Everyone, take care.